Uh, I see one of the guys that lives on the streets. I see he's in the meeting. Bohika, bockamo, what's going on? So, uh, welcome to this evening's livestream. We are at the Inglewood Colorado City Council Meeting. Yeah, please hit that like right off the bat. And, uh, with us this evening is... Hold on, reintroduction. And with us this evening is young studly, uh, Luis from the Royal Constitutional Upholter. Oh, yes. I'm just, I'm just trying to bolster the ego. Reagan is all about bolstering the ego. And, um, speaking of ego, we've already had a little bit of a blowout. Uh, before starting this livestream, imagine if you will, everyone, this is Officer Kontos. I want to introduce you to, um, Detective Kontos. I didn't realize, I realized the guy was ninety. Um, you've heard me and Young Sarah maybe talk about Kontos. Um, Kontos is the quote-unquote detective that has failed to investigate the theft of, uh, Leonard Odenell's, uh, personal finances. Yes. That would be him. This is Detective Kontos, um, who's been with the, um, Inglewood PD since, I think, before he was born. Um, I'm quite sure it was before he was born. And he has, uh, failed to do his job. He'll be in a civil rights lawsuit, I suspect, very soon. And so anyway, he told me that I couldn't record. Well, that went real well. And, uh, then I had to go have words with, uh, Chief Jackson. That didn't go well either. Um, he told me that I needed to get away from him. Um, and I told him that he doesn't give me orders and that if he was essentially that big of a pussy and that afraid, he could get away from me. Cause he wouldn't answer my question about why every time I come here, I'm being told by the cops, "I can't record this public meeting." Or them, while going through security. It feels intentional. It feels deliberate, if you will. So I wanted to give you some of that context before we go through, uh, security again. Did you see the look on his face when I told him, "You don't give me orders"? Did you see the look on his face? Are you looking at him when I said that?
It's hard to remember, but, I mean, he looked pretty...
He was...
Flustered.
He was pissed!
He'll let you know. So, I mean...
No, when, when I went over there to talk to Jackson, did you hear him tell me, "You need to de-escalate and go over there"? And did you hear me tell him, "You don't give me orders"? Did you see his face?
Solace? I mean, imagine talking to your chief.
A chief. He, he's not my chief!
The chief of Inglewood and you just ask him and talk to him about simple things and then shut down and plead the fifth.
Yeah, he got, he got up and left. I don't know if he's back or what, but we'll see.
It's cowardice.
Yeah, so if you don't like it, um, cop, you de-escalate and remove yourself.
I didn't even think it was escalated. I thought you-
It wasn't escalated. I was asking questions, right?
I thought you were just asking questions that seemed reasonable to me and... I didn't seem any... I didn't feel like anybody was aggressive or anything. I thought it was just a-
He just had a meltdown and didn't like that he was being required to answer a question. And you know Reagan, she just kinda stands there and waits for an answer. So, we're gonna make some public comment this evening. I'm a little frazzled. We've been out doing some cop watching. Um, and some chalking and redressing of government. So, well, thanks, Arthur. I appreciate that. Jeannie, how are you?
Fourteen likes.
That's all we, we only have fourteen thumbs up, you guys. Come on.
Fifteen.
Oh, there we go. They're going up. We only got forty-four people.
Eighteen?
Come on, we can do it.
Sixteen, we're at sixteen.
Right on. We have to have twenty-five before we're gonna go in.
Twenty-five thousand.
You hope I brought a box of Kleenex for the crybabies. I did not. And I'm not, I'm not offering up my sleeve. Oh, Bohika, thanks. Not really. I had court this morning, you guys, in Denver. Um, stay tuned for that update. That was very interesting. I want to talk to you about that. It's kind of important. Um, what am I, fifth? We're, we're signed up for public comment here this evening. I think we're fifth and sixth on the list.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and so, um, did you put your city?
I did.
Okay. What city are you from?
Utopia.
Really?
Yeah.
You're from Utopia too?
Yeah.
That's so cool. I've got a fellow Utopian coming to the public comment at Inglewood where we're required to put our city or we don't get to speak. So, we're Utopians from Utopia.
They made sure they highlighted the part that says you have to fill this out properly, or else...
And there are some people on there that didn't. And I'm just guessing that the rules are not gonna apply to them. Let's see. What brand of chest rig are you wearing?
I don't remember. I bought this years ago. This is just like a throwaway. Um, that way if the police take it again, it's not my, it's not the good one.
Gotcha. We got twenty-eight likes. It's time to go. I said we weren't going in before we had twenty-five. Yes. I tried to ask the chief why you're so stupid. He wouldn't give me an answer. And then it dawned on me, you're Kontos. So, you're the detective responsible for not investigating Leonard Odenell's theft. Now I remember who you are. You don't have much to say about dereliction of duty, do you?
I mean, even if I did have ammunition in there, I mean, I'd, I need a rifle to, you know, still point this-
I know.
I'm not sure he knows that, but, okay.
Or a pistol.
Hmm, that wasn't going off earlier. Now it is. You're not about to tell me I can't record, are you?
Reagan, I don't care, so go ahead.
You don't care now?
No.
Oh. Why? Why did you care before?
Because nobody told me that they allow you to come through while recording.
You're at a public meeting. You're a cop on duty. These are things you're supposed to know.
Do you wanna go through, Reagan?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, when, when I'm ready to go through, I'll go through. So, why is that going off now, when it did not go off earlier?
I have no idea.
You have no idea why that's going off, huh? Yeah, sure.
Alright, you're good.
Mm-hmm, I know I am. That's pretty piggish. Why is that thing going off? Uh, not one thing is different on me. Not one. Mm-hmm.
Were you wearing your watch the first time? Yeah, you didn't-
Yeah, absolutely. So, are we in public comment already? Here's Gary. Should we go in and take our designated spot in the back? While they're allowing others to record and do stuff up front, um, I've been documenting those meetings. But, um... I take it we're on public comment. Should we go in? Y'all ready to go in and take our designated spot on the back of the bus?
I encourage everyone to carefully evaluate the possible causes of interest and adequately evaluate this situation in its entirety, to fully consider the substantial monetary gains from this project. It was recently announced that the city of Inglewood will receive ninety-eight thousand dollars from the Colorado Statewide Internet Portal Authority, or SIPA, to fund the new city website. What may not be public information is that the director of SIPA's grant program is the same individual who founded Vibrant Inglewood, the lobbying group whose endorsements were linked on the city's website and included in suppliers distributed by the city during their recent election. Acceptance of this money means that they have access to observe, report, and otherwise document all activity related to those grant funds or the project. Despite frustration and disappointment, I choose to remain hopeful. I, I hope the responsible parties will refuse themselves and those remaining will use this debacle as an opportunity to reset, to recommit to integrity, accountability, and to governing in a way that better reflects the privilege of living, working, and governing in the city of Inglewood.
Chelsea, thank you very much for your time tonight. Member Russell, you have a question.
Yes, do you have documentation of some of the things that you've shared with us?
I do, uh, according to that actually.
Is, is it possible you could share that with us?
Yeah, I got copies with me.
Okay, and if you could give those to the city, she, get it to us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor. Thank you, Member Russell. Any further questions for members of council? See you. Chelsea, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Laura Cooper, District Four Resident. Three, uh, District Four.
Good evening, council. My name is Laura Cooper. I live in Pearl in Radcliffe. I'm here tonight to share with you about the Inglewood Holiday Store. We make an announcement at a council meeting each year so that you are formally invited to participate and so that those present here or watching the meeting are fully prepared about this amazing event. I'll start by explaining what the store is for the uninitiated. Going on its thirteenth year, the Inglewood Holiday Store aims to make the holiday season affordable, attainable, and memorable for families in Inglewood schools. It began in twenty-twelve as the Bishop Christmas Store, which was built right for the gifts, and it has since transformed into an event that serves over two hundred Inglewood families every year, representing nearly seven hundred children. It's a massive effort and we need all hands on deck to pull this off. On Saturday, December fourteenth, we'll transform the gym at Bishop Elementary School into a holiday shopping experience for families who have been referred through their school. We will have collected hundreds of gifts, new gifts valued at twenty-five dollars each and have them displayed for parents to select for their children. Parents pay just five dollars for each gift, making the experience affordable, but also providing agency to their parents. We offer free gift wrapping, groceries, outerwear, and childcare as part of this experience as well. What I love most about our approach is that when children open these gifts on Christmas morning, they're getting a present, a present lovingly gift by their own parents, not from a charity or from a charity. So here's what I need. Everyone can go to inglewoodholidaysstore.com. You can make a financial contribution, uh, and we can purchase gifts on your behalf, or you can find suggested registries on there and shop for gifts yourself if you're so inclined. You can have the gifts delivered to us if you shop online, or if you prefer to shop in person, you can drop a call at the Inglewood appointment starting next week. We need to raise about twenty thousand dollars and collect nearly three hundred and fifty gifts to fill out the store this year. I know we can do it because Inglewood is a great city and people here really care about their neighbors, but I need all the help you can give us in getting the word out about this. If it's okay with you, I have a stack of postcards for you and anyone present here tonight to take home with them as a reminder of this important event.
Miss Cooper, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? See, I'm Mr. Cooper. Thank you again. Up next is Louis Johnson. Uh, from outside, uh, see if you can- Can you hear Mr. Johnson? When you're ready, you can make it.
I want to say about the city of Inglewood. I think they're just like here. It's horrible. They don't handle the police properly. And this is what led to the violent lawsuit against the city of Inglewood and the police. And a specific officer, her name is Laura Torres, a Inglewood police partner. She falsely arrested me on September seventeen and took my car. She took this property without probable cause. That would reason why there's suspicion of a crime. And who's the crime defendant? The city. Where does the money come from? The people. I have two words on this point.
Nice job.
Thank you for your time. Any questions for members of council? Thank you again for coming tonight, Mr. Johnson. Up next is, uh, Chris Dewis, the District Four Resident.
Oh, you got to speak before me because I've not spoken within the last ninety days.
Good evening. It's frustrating that I haven't spent my evening here adjusting the city council when I could be with my friends and family watching Monday Night Football. But that's exactly why I'm here, because this is supposed to be a city of law and order. We all know the saying, "Justice delayed is justice denied." If a remedy exists but isn't delivered in timely manner, transparent, honest, in a transparent and honest way, then it might as well not exist at all. And in this situation, the injured party is the people of Inglewood. At the last city council meeting, both the mayor and the city manager acknowledged wrongdoing. I give credit to Sean Lowe for admitting his mistakes. It takes care of you to do that, but he is clearly not the only one involved. There were others. Behind the scenes, and everyone in this room knows it. So many questions. So my question to the city council is simple. How do you allow this to go on so long without stepping in? In my opinion, the election is now compromised. Maybe you disagree, but you can't deny that public trust has been damaged. And the trust is the foundation of every legitimate election. To those who worked hard to run a fair process, I applaud you. Your dedication mattered.
Election, Rita.
Your hard work has been overshadowed and undermined to no fault of your own. Now it is up to this council, our leaders, to hold accountable those accountable, accountable, those responsible for this mess. No excuses are allowed. Because at the end of the day, a chief is a chief. Inglewood needs a council that leads with integrity, transparency, and urgency. We deserve nothing else.
Mr. Dewis, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? See, I think you're coming tonight. Up next is Noah Kaplan, a District Four Resident.
If I may, uh, I wasn't expecting my professional integrity to be called for the question tonight, so that's not part of the statement. Members and members of council, my name is Noah Kaplan, and just over a year ago, I founded an organization called Vibrant Inglewood.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in the last year, our organization has grown and we've held a number of public events in the community in addition to our regular meetings, which are open to, for anybody to attend. As an advocacy organization, we made the decision to advocate around both candidates and ballot measures in this fall's local elections. Unfortunately, our election-related materials were also included within materials produced for the Neighborhood Resources Program. Vibrant Inglewood did not know about those materials and did not know their creation. I personally reached out to the individual who made them and asked him to remove those references as soon as I found out that he had done that. It was unfortunate, but we understand the desire to look into what could and should have been done differently to avoid it. I emailed a written statement on behalf of the organization to all the council members earlier this evening. Separate from that issue, I wanted to respond to comments that were made by Councilmember Russell at the last council meeting. Councilmember Russell stated that Vibrant Inglewood ruined her reputation. It wasn't clear at the time what she was referring to, and I'm still baffled by the statement. Councilmember Russell is an at-large member of the council, meaning she represents everyone in the city. Her campaign slogan was "Leadership That Listens." Yet, when a group of Inglewood residents decided to express our opinion about who should serve as mayor of the city, she chose to demonize us rather than listening to the reasons we didn't support her. I received this mailer at my house before the election. It advocates for Rita Russell for mayor, and then goes on to talk about, quote, "An organization calling itself Vibrant Inglewood," with scare quotes around her name. Councilmember Russell and I had coffee together months ago to talk about Vibrant Inglewood and why I had created the organization. So I don't understand the need for the scare quotes. The mailer goes on to ask where the money for our mailers and advertising is coming from. The answer is that we didn't have any paid advertisements or any mailers or poll communications of any kind. If we had an impact on the election, it was because we made sure that neighbors were talking to neighbors. We went door-to-door and spoke to the people of Inglewood about our views on the election. I'm proud of the actions we took, and I'm disappointed that Councilmember Russell chose to publicly attack us for that instead of actually being a leader who listens. Thank you.
Holy crap. Get him, Rita, get him.
Mr. Kaplan, I would like to see that. I sent nothing out about you or anyone else. I only sent things out by my, for myself. Yes, I want to see, I want to see the article.
Okay. Do you have a next for-
I mean, then, Mr. Kaplan, you can- Um, I don't, but it went to many households. It was sent by Independent Inglewood, which is the committee that was established to advocate for the ballot measure, which you were involved with collecting signatures for.
Um, yes, but I did not send that out.
I, I didn't say you did.
Mr. Kaplan, I think, I think we have-
Get him, Rita.
Yeah. Um, no, any further questions for members of council? Mr. Kaplan, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Reagan Benson from outside Inglewood.
Well, well, well. How cool is this? It's been a while since I've been here. You know, Member Russell, you and I, we don't really agree on everything. There, there are some things that we kinda butt heads on. But what happened to you and the others that were running? I mean, come on. It couldn't be more obvious. And I have to be careful with every word I use, because these attorneys for these people that I'm suing, they watch this, and they pick up on a word, and then they file a counter lawsuit. Huh, Joe, Sierra, Sean, Tamara. Well, they're the only two suing, countersuing me right now. These dummies have given up because they know they need to. You know, and I, I just want to say allegedly cheated through the election. Allegedly. Wouldn't that be something, Sierra, if you had to allegedly cheat to beat Rita Russell, like double the vote? Are you kidding me? Like nobody knows what Rita Russell has accomplished in the city of Inglewood. I think you are allegedly a dirty rotten cheater. And allegedly you did it with Vibrant Inglewood, while allegedly these two dummies over here made sure it happened. Who do you people think you're fooling? You're not fooling anybody. You're alleged cheaters, Steve Ward. Yeah, you. You care to explain why under your leadership this city has seen the most amount of civil lawsuits that it has ever seen in its history of existence? Federal civil lawsuits for civil rights violations. Because it's being led by a bunch of alleged cheaters. You are alleged cheaters. And you should be fired and prosecuted. You are alleged cheaters. Are you hearing me? We got thirty seconds left.
And then, do you have a camera?
No. I have a right to record my public comment. Yay, Reagan Benson! Woo-hoo! Thank you for your time!
There they do it again. No, no, hold on. Stay here. Stay here. Yep. How are you?
Thank you.
Of course.
Exactly, and these Republicans keep taking everything away from us. I was arrested illegally just like you. Uh, misconduct. I, you were from the area. Have you heard of hate?
Sounds familiar. It's pretty big, right?
There's combatants. Basically, when just two degrees out, they put people, they put people like this in a motel. If you're disabled, they pick you up and say, "No, fuck you." And I sued them, and now I, I did a little quick again. Actually, I could be here Thursday for them. And I was arrested-
They're gonna try to remove me.
They, I had warrants out. I'm like, why do I have warrants out? And these fucking Republicans need to become a lesson.
Hold this, please.
Are you two really leaving?
No. What do you think? What do you think?
I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna try to do.
Do you want me to get anything before, just in case?
No, I'll give you.
Car keys? Or-
I do believe this is a-
Contact number for-
One, one picture person law, so as long as one person has a camera, you can have anything anywhere.
Well, we're at a public meeting, so right there alone is where we exercise our First Amendment rights.
Oh, and we're not allowed to clap, which is, takes away our freedom of speech.
Everybody else in here is clapping, so...
So these trumpets need to be fired and sent to jail.
So you know, that was during the public comment, and she had every right to clap her hand during that time. She had every right to sing something I hate.
Yep.
And, and if it were my point, she had to throw under the chair, but she had every right to use that time.
Yep.
You can give more congratulationses than anybody.
Good job, chief.
That's a new chief?
That's a new chief. I actually just went up and said that. I said, "You have the right to."
So we're on?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
We're wasting a lot of time. That's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm. We're on a, we're on a public break of a public meeting.
So they had a problem with you recording.
Yep.
And live streaming. So you folks on the camera, she's risking whatever they're trying to do for this, for us.
Idiots. Did you tell them they were idiots? Idiots. They're back. The idiots are back.
They're back. The idiots are back.
All right, members of the council, we are now back. We did have to expect them to leave the meeting. She's still here, but we will continue on.
Not one person asked me to leave this meeting. He's lying. They told him to tell me to leave. No? Oh, the video's not working. It's not been working. He just made comment off the record that I was told to leave the meeting and that I'm choosing not to leave.
So this lady over here, when they said that, when they said that the video's off, she said, "Oh, thank God somebody's recording."
Mm-hmm. That's why you have to record these meetings. They lie.
I mean, if you can see it with your eyes, why can't you record it?
At a public meeting.
Okay, so let's see if we have video working.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead and state that again.
Up next is, uh, Senator...
He just put on the record that I was told I had to leave the meeting. Boy, that's gonna look good in the lawsuit as well. I hope your attorneys are watching, Sierra. I hope your hired firm attorneys to fight the civil rights lawsuit are watching.
This whole issue around that, that will be part of what we're gonna talk about in the second session. I feel that you two, Fanny and Steve, you recuse yourself, since you were the two that benefited from it. So I suggest that you recuse yourself from any discussions or any votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kalhough, for your time tonight. Any questions from the council? Thank you again for your time tonight. Up next is Kayla Whitehead, a district woman. Good evening, Ms. Whitehead. When you are ready, you may begin.
Jan Laiker, Edelma Melphie. So, um, one of the things I value is our freedom of speech. And I have to say, Reagan Benson was within her time period and should not have been dissed the way she was by this council, by Mayor Sierra.
Thanks, Jan.
That was unexcusable during her time. And as a matter of fact, I was escorted out a couple of meetings ago at your request because I applauded while people were walking to the podium, which was not disrupting the meeting. And I probably could sue if I wanted to. However, on to this. So regarding budget, when you look at the budget, please stop approving frivolous spending, which might include painting streets, changing curb stops except for safety reasons. But look at frigillosity, please, and I hope we didn't cancel the care about how many was spent. The state of Colorado is trying to figure out eight hundred and fifty-one million in shortfall due to frivolous spending. As far as the election goes, there was a lot of stuff that went on in the background here, including vibrant Inglewood. Posters, there are flyers were printed allegedly on city crunchers. I believe I heard that, but I can't swear to it. There were things that were posted via the city website. There was an investigation done by somebody, someone new, rather than a third-party unrelated person. This has happened before.
Mm-hmm.
I think Sean probably should be known for the health of the city, but that probably won't happen either.
Nope.
Rappel County is under investigation right now by the DOJ for election fraud. They're here. They're looking at us. They're looking at the state of Colorado. And my bad is this is all gonna blow up. I am happy to send the most recent video I have to anybody that wants it. The election was not, from what I could tell, correct. We don't, won't know for sure until the tax vote records come out, and then they can be analyzed. But if you look at past elections and what happened during this one, it doesn't look right. If people are elected fairly, that what happened before the election during the campaign is fair, and the votes are counted fairly, I'm all for our free elections and the people...
Ms. Whitehead, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of the council? I have one. You mentioned Rappel County is being, uh, being investigated by the DOJ. Uh, where did you hear that? I haven't heard that, so...
I can send you some videos that show that. It's, it's on there. If you go to public comment, there it's been talked about. You can look up Ben Solomon, who is the investigator that showed parallel motion. I believe I brought some of his grants in here a year ago. And of course, you don't listen very well, so you don't know that, but I'm happy to send you some information.
Do we have any information from the website, from a news source that's actually stating that? That's what I'm asking.
You can go. There's a, um, lawsuit right there in Nevada that references Rappel County that, um, Rappel County is, is that lawsuit? And so you can look it up, and I'll be happy to send you some information.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. That would be helpful. Thank you for, uh, I see no further questions. Thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Candice Rowland, uh, sister from outside Inglewood. Good evening, Candice. When you are ready, you may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Candice Rowland, and I'm from Littleton. And I last time spoke about the situation involving two of my street cat friends being sick after staying at Lucky Hotel, or Hotel. And then I also mentioned that one went to the cir-, had surgery after having an ambulance trip, and, uh, we had taken a Swedish. And I happened to find my visitor tags from Swedish, and that was around the end of January, to make that clear. And I have two details about that, that I'd like to put on the record for the video. One of those is that when I was visiting him, and I sat in the hall because I was waiting as two people, a man and a woman, just rolled a portable, what they seem to describe as an x-ray machine, into that room of his, and he was sitting on the bench by the windows. And they took a chest x-ray allegedly, and that's what that machine was doing. And they had no shielding on him at all for any other body parts. And they were being directed by a cell phone to be doing this. And when they were directed by the cell phone, I remember the male of the two of them saying that they thought that someone else had come and done this bit more, but they were gonna go ahead and do the x-ray anyway. So that told me that there were repeat instances of x-rays stuck to my head. And when I asked him on the street outside of the life center later, I said, "How many times?" And he said, "Oh, a few." I'm like, "Well, that's kind of creepy." And then I remember vividly that they rolled that x-ray machine out into the hall, and they were stopped. And I had thought the picture looked pretty clear to me when I saw it on the machine. And then they stopped when the picture was out of my view, but the machine was aimed at me. And then they said that the screen was getting fuzzy, and that they had to wipe it or something like that. And I thought, "That was kind of creepy. Is that machine still on? Are they not turning it off or able to turn that off?" So I wanted to point that out. And then something else that I remember from my time as an Uber driver from twenty oh, two, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three is that I had to go to the ER at Swedish at one point when I was an Uber driver. And I was having breathing complications, and I tried to scan my ID at the check-in, and it wouldn't scan. And one of the nurses called her up and said, "You're the only one all day who hasn't been able to scan their ID." And so, um, I waited in the lobby, and one of the other nurses took pity on me because I was the last person to be seen. And in the interim of waiting, I remember...
Ms. Rowland, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for coming to speak tonight. Remember, Rappel is a fact of my experience.
Yes, thank you. Did you report any of these anomalies to the hospital authorities or to the police?
I don't believe so. My interactions with the police have always gone very well. I've tried to report things in the past. No. I don't believe I did. I believe I spoke about some of it in front of Rappel County's commissioner meeting, though.
Okay. And then my next question is, what is it that you would like for the city council to do about these issues?
So whenever I've tried to interact with the police or the FBI or CBI, I've often been redirected to other places. I've often been told to work with the other agency. I've often been ignored or not been able to get a police report in hand when I needed it. So I suppose, uh, just by having it recorded that I said this, and any contacts that you have who can reach the proper channels to get these things handled, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. And if you stick around during the break, I'd like to touch base with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Rowland, thank you very much for your time tonight. I see no further questions from the council. Uh, up next is Rebecca Kramer, a district woman. Good evening, Ms. Kramer. When you are ready, you may begin.
Good evening, council. I'm requesting the council make the report of the investigation into the violations of the Parading and Breach of the Act of 2021. I've been directly affected by the actions and failures of the city staff. And I feel that it's hard to say the words. Steve Ward was correct at the last meeting when he stated that there would be a cloud over the validity of this election and that it would follow the council for the next four years. Thank you.
Ms. Kramer, thank you very much for your time tonight. I see no further questions. Thank you for coming tonight. Up next is Jan LaKoye, uh, the district resident. Good evening, Ms. LaKoye. When you are ready, you may begin.
Jan LaKoye, Shanae Oren Sherman. This evening is a regrettable moment for the leadership of Inglewood to be facing. It's worth noting that this moment was preceded by many opportunities for it not to happen so. It's hard for me to fathom, and even more difficult for me to say that I believe council and the city manager are out of touch with how truly bad things are with staff making decisions, and I will apply it to this past election specifically. On September twenty-ninth, I formed a political committee and submitted paperwork to the city clerk's office. With my email submission, I asked for a notification back or receipt and acceptance. I received an email with no date-stamped receipt of my committee paperwork. Canvas Credit Union has legal requirements that could not be fulfilled without seeing the date-stamped paperwork. For more than two hours, we tried unsuccessfully to reach the city clerk's office. I finally resorted to calling a council member to get this accomplished. It did not arrive until after business hours with the clerk telling me she was alone in the office that day. Why, during an election specifically, is that office not fully staffed in-house? This is unacceptable. A week later, I sent an email to the city clerk asking where to find specific contribution information. I was not asking for her to interpret it. The response? No answer at all. None. Is this a type of response the public should receive from staff that is here to serve the citizens of the city under homural governance, where it is her position to know and clarify campaign issues? Mr. Lewis, this has happened under your curfew, and it has not garnered respect. I would, it would appear that leadership of your office demands have been lacking. What has been entrusted to you is the oversight of city staff at its most critical and influential moment during this election season. Now, with all residents watching in this nonpartisan moment, your attention is found wanting. Your staff was without guidance and self-ruling in opposition to lawful fulfillment of their duties. I'm referring to the unlawful breaking of compliance regulations for the changing of the date stamp on Mr. Bevill's camp-, uh, campaign paperwork. I believe the law should label that as fraudulent. Deniability has muddled the elections and a legal black mark in far too many places. Credibility has been severed. Which is worse, error by commission or by omission? The answer is neither. This rests on your shoulders. Perhaps the strongest moment of leadership you could convey in this moment, Mr. Lewis, would be to holistically step down with the staff for counsel and the citizens of Inglewood.
Ms. LaKoye, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of the council? Seeing none, thank you for your time tonight. And last name on the list, yes, it is, it's Gary Kozak, a district woman. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Kozak. When you are ready, you may begin.
Good evening, council. Gary Kozak, from Inglewood. You talk about vibrant Inglewood. I don't know if they're involved. But when in the world has it been formally accepted that candidates go into grade schools and hand out campaign forms? Whoever's out there listening that's investigating what's going on, you better take a closer look at that, because I've seen kids coming out of grade schools with campaign files. Second, ladies. What happened to the money that was brought, sent to Inglewood for the Broadway Bridge at Hampton? I'm curious, because I was told during one of my Broadway meetings that it was pulled from that project and used on the Broadway project. And then I sat on the South Runway project, and they're pushing it through as though we, the citizens, asked anything. My questions were never answered. Infrastructure, drainage and stuff was never answered. They just said, "Oh, put these little stickers up here and vote on it." And then they said, "Well, some of the stickers came off, so we did a phone vote. They turned around and reduced the speed. Narrow the lanes on Broadway, and then put these bump outs to where the buses happen to now stop in the lane of traffic." I'm here to tell you, I was part of that board, and we had no say in what went wrong with that board. They're just telling you that, "Look, we let the citizens speak." Going back to a couple of other things. I understand that there may be a council member that has your health insurance taken away. Talking to the community not here in the public, go ahead and question. I also understand that a while back, you guys voted that you had some money that was granted to Inglewood for infrastructure and stuff, and that money got given to Littleton, whether there were strings attached or whatever. Uh, you can't even afford a crosswalk down there on the Rex Center. If you allow the bridge and pay all this extra money for the crossover bridge, it's not even in Inglewood. It's in Sheridan, because that side of the track is in Sheridan. It's a Sheridan bike rail station, and we, the Inglewood taxpayers, are paying for part of that, and it's not even in our state. Thank you so much. God bless you all. I hope the investigation...
History tends to repeat itself. That is true.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Mr. Kozak? Sina, thank you very much for your time. And go ahead, uh, state clerk. Is there something else?
Thank you. Is there someone else? Nathan Hoag.
Is he in the room or is he online?
Okay. Never mind.
Nope. Okay. All right, with that, that does conclude public comments. I can't give you a response tonight. Uh, on public comment, I think, uh, I'm giving a response tonight. And, uh, remember, it's all, uh, absent. Uh, so I do appreciate everybody coming to speak tonight. I don't think I'm gonna go by my line, run through every name, but I do appreciate everybody coming and speaking tonight. Chelsea Anderson, thank you very much for coming to speak tonight regarding, um, some of the things that you've seen over the past, uh, few months in terms of, uh, ones you don't agree with in the city. Um, obviously, we do want to do better. Do you believe that you provided the information to the state clerk or no?
Yes.
So I'm very curious to see that information, so thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. And obviously, we would be speaking on, uh, some of the other issues as part of the second session tonight. Laura Cooper, I don't think you're here. Thank you very much for making us aware of the Inglewood Holiday Store that will be occurring here over the next few months. So thank you very much for just bringing attention to it. I'm sure that we will be hearing more of it over the next month or so. Uh, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for coming to speak tonight regarding, uh, some of your issues. We'll look a little bit further into your allegations. We'll look a little bit further into your allegations. But I do appreciate the work that the police department is doing, but I do want to understand a little bit more about your case. I'll be asking for a little more information on your situation specifically. Especially regarding the property that was confiscated in your case, I do want to get a little more-
Yeah, like all the emails that I sent to them.
Mr. Dewis, Ms. Kellah, Ms. Wyper, let's see here, Ms. Kramer, Ms. McCoy, and I guess Mr. Kozak as well, we're gonna be speaking regarding some of the issues around the election tonight, as well as obviously some of the issues that you alluded to regarding the Old New Park and the election, SCPA complaint. So we'll be speaking a little bit more about that, we'll make more information available after that executive session. So I do appreciate you coming and speaking tonight as well. Mr. Kaplan, thank you very much for coming to speak in tonight. You know, obviously, just thank you very much for providing a little bit of background about my career in Inglewood. I'm sure that more citizens should just know a little bit more about the organization of what it is that you're trying to get across to members of council, so I do appreciate that. And I believe, Ms. Rutledge, thank you very much for coming to speak in again tonight as well. I think we, I think I'm still waiting on the answer of the original request from your, from when you came, it was a couple weeks back. Thank you for providing a little bit more clarity in terms of the dates and a little bit more information on what occurred. But I'll take a look to see if we got an answer or got that answered after you came, it was called the third, I believe. Thank you very much for bringing more attention to it. All right, and I believe I did cover everyone, but thank you very much, everyone, for coming to speak in tonight. Member Russell, go ahead.
I'm highly offended, ma'am, at the way you treated me with disrespect. And it's not okay. And Mr. Kaplan, independent Inglewood did not use the city website to get their message out. I never had a problem with you, and I don't believe I said what you said. I didn't blame vibrant, I blame vibrant Inglewood for using the city website. And obviously, it's something that you should know better than doing. You understand absolutely. So Mr. Kaplan, you cannot answer me right now.
Oh, wow.
Yes, I can. It is my turn. You had your opportunity.
Come on, mayor.
You were up here.
What are you doing?
So you used the city website to disparage three of us. He should be asked to leave.
Mr. Kaplan, please. Mr. Kaplan, please, you didn't have to, that's a during response. Thank you.
I actually am very disappointed in this council in how they disrespect certain people but respect others. And I am not okay with that, and people are not okay with that. They see what's going on here. That's all I'm gonna say. I have been disrespected by this council, and I actually appreciate Ms. Benson for your remarks. I think they were absolutely 100% correct in your assessment of the votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Governor Russell. Please, no pause tonight, we can't see who exactly is putting on the topic tonight. I do know, we're responding to public comments. And with that, everyone, we are now moving on to the security here.
I think we have one item for-
I think it's time for us to go. I'm gonna go apologize to the chief of police. Well, I take that back. I'm going to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kozak, can I get a second?
Please, second of the line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brain.
Member Dean Anderson.
Let's go.
Member Brain.
Hi.
Member Buckle.
Hi.
Member Warren.
Hi.
Mary Tia.
Hi.
Member Marshall, hi.
All right, we got to, uh, we're gonna see what's going on.
You did a terrible job. You get F'd. You're a bad cop. You're a bad cop, Kontos. All right. Let's go look at some chalk art.
What did we do, confiscate a gun?
It's a whole lot, but I got arrested for obstruction for asking a cop for a name. And then they took my, I was dressed like this, and they took my gun, they took my plate carrier.
This is the real constitutional upholder, young man, that's been arrested five, four times by Inglewood, and all his cases have been dismissed. They took his gun, held it unconstitutionally for an extended amount of time, and he has filed a he's the third civil rights lawsuit this year. Yeah.
Yeah, no, we need people that stand up and, you know. And it's so obvious that they protect their own, so, anyway.
Yeah. Go, Inglewood. More chalk art for the cheaters. You did see the chalk art. Thank you. Let's, let's check out the chalk art. We did some downstairs too, but I'm done doing stairs. So if you're wondering what is going on with all this talk about election cheating, yes, it happened, and I don't even live in Inglewood, and I watched it all go down. Sean Lewis and Tamara Niles are this city's number one problem in the most dirtiest employees of the city, of course, city manager and the city attorney. This vibrant Inglewood group formed a, you know, committee to bolster the candidates that they wanted, and they just allegedly, I'm sorry, I forgot, this, I gotta back up and rephrase everything because this is alleged election fair practices law violations, okay? All alleged that they partnered with Sean Lewis's staff to get free advertising using city resources to advertise their picks of people they wanted to win the election. It's not the first time the city has used city resources allegedly to sway campaigns and election results, if you will. And the second election results came out on the, on election day. Ciara was ahead of Rita Russell by double. Yeah, so, and the voter turnout, that's another whole discussion. If you're into voter data and all that kind of stuff, you'll understand. But I'm telling you that I believe this alleged to be, with alleged certainty, that they cheated allegedly, okay? So that's the whole thing about the election. So Rita Russell will continue a two-year term and finish out her city council seat as an at-large member. Ciara will remain mayor, and it eliminates a seat, so Kim Wright will not be back on council after the beginning of the year. And this nobody named Jack Bethel, I don't even know what the dude looks like. He won as well because he's, you know, with the slate of progressives that will do anything to maintain power. Heaven forbid there be a split on city council and there be some other voices on city council, right? And so Steve Ward essentially replaces Kim Wright. Yeah, if I have that right. And then Jack Bethel, this nobody, somebody that got elected, will be on city council because he's friends with, with Steve and Joe and Ciara and, right? So they can keep their majority bullshit going. So if you saw the public comment, they interrupted me, Ciara did this again. He's done this before, this is why I'm suing them. He told me that I had to stop talking. Even after he recognized me to speak, he decided at 2 minutes and 30 seconds into my 3 minutes that I could no longer talk because he didn't like me hitting at home and then standing there clapping. I was using my phone to record my public comment. What they allow others to do, but not Regan Benson to do, okay? We've got lots of documentation about what Ciara allows some people to do, but not Regan Benson. And so, I don't know if you heard them when they came out from their break, when they so respectfully got up and walked off the dais, right? Because they needed to take a break because Regan Benson was still talking. He came back out and put on the record that Regan Benson had been asked to leave the meeting, and she's still here. And then it came out that they forgot to turn the video back on for the meeting. On their YouTube channel. So if you want to watch some of these meetings, you should. You should go to this city's YouTube channel and watch what went on earlier tonight and what went on at the last regular city council meeting after the election, or right before the election. So, yeah, it's, this place, it's bad news, it's bad news. And what it ultimately ends up being is bad news for the homeless community. So we came out, I came out and did some chalking. I am allegedly asking a question, do you cheat much? Ciara, Ward, and Jack Bethel, I don't, I don't even know who this guy is. But he, of course, was on vibrant Inglewood slate of selected candidates who are also rallying for all tax increases and yada, yada, yada. You know, give government more money because they're doing such a good job. So up here, I wrote, fire the liars and cheaters. Sean Lewis, city manager. Tamara, T. Niles, city attorney. I call her Tamara because for those of you that have followed our administrative hearings, that attorney they hired to represent the city, he didn't even know Tamara's name was Tamara, he kept calling her Tamara. So ask them how to cheat in order to win an election. So I suspect, I could be wrong, I need to apologize to my attorneys in advance. These stupid attorneys that Inglewood has hired to represent these defendants against Regan Benson's civil rights lawsuit, federal lawsuit, 1983 civil rights violation lawsuit, where they authored two bogus arrest warrants for me because they don't like me talking. They want to shut me down, they banned me from city council meetings, they banned me from the building, they banned me from the library, and then they tried to criminally prosecute me, and all of that stuff got dismissed. And so now, everybody's going to have all their dreams and wishes and hopes come true when they say, go use, go use the courts, take it to the courts, work it out in the courts. So where that lawsuit currently stands is their attorneys have filed a motion to delay discovery, to get a stay on the discovery phase of this lawsuit, which would be, you know, a typical move of losers that are going to lose. And the judge is very likely to grant that stay because their dockets are insanely heavy. So we'll see how that plays out. In the meantime, the counter lawsuit is still going back and forth like a little ping pong session. At first, all of the defendants were suing me. Then they figured out that a Monell claim isn't gonna work, so they had to dismiss most of the defendants trying to sue a person who is suing government under a 1983 claim. What they're doing is they're building up the damages for retaliation for filing the lawsuit. So that's cool, I mean, whatever, we can do this for five, 10 years, I don't mind because it's about what is right, and we are going to prevail. And so we're probably gonna be in a, probably, I'm guessing, a year holding pattern on this lawsuit. So I don't suspect there'll be much more news. I mean, that motion hasn't been granted yet, we haven't had anything ruled on by the judge. So, uh, but what they do is they watch my live streams, right? And so for those of you that don't know what Tamara and Sean are countersuing me for, it's total blasphemy. It is just total nonsense. Defamation for allegedly inferring that they're having an affair. Yes. Allegedly, I used the word cornholio, and I used it allegedly at a meeting here, making public comment. And so that implied that Tamara and Sean were having meh, 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 of course. You get what I'm saying? I didn't know. That's what cornhole meant, cornhole the game? Apparently, I don't know enough, or I don't spend enough time on East Colfax or on certain websites on the internet that might teach me about things that I, in my 53-year-old brain and 34 years of marriage, am just completely oblivious to. But not Tamara and Sean, apparently. They are countersuing me for allegedly implying that they're engaging in sex acts, which would imply allegedly that they're having an affair, and allegedly, I think I read in a motion, that Tamara would like the whole world to know allegedly that she's happily married. Something allegedly like that. So, yeah, it's interesting what these people are mustering up for a counter lawsuit. So I suspect after tonight, they are going to amend that counter lawsuit again, probably to include some word or three words that I said on this live stream that implied some kind of defamatory, compensatory damages for speech. But I can't quit talking. I gave my attorneys a little bit of a break because I felt bad for them having to respond to all this nonsense. I don't know what to say, you guys, this place is bad, it's really, really bad news. And so I did, before I left, I thanked Chief Jackson. I just said, thank you, you did a good job. He knew better than to remove me from that meeting. Ciara allegedly lied on the record and said that I had been told that I needed to leave the meeting. I don't know if Tamara, T. Niles, and T. stands for a very special word, knew that Chief Jackson did not tell me to leave the meeting. I would hope that Chief Jackson of the Inglewood Police Department has learned enough about Regan Benson and free speech in Colorado and how aggressive we are to stand up for our right to redress our government in any language minus a threat that we choose to. Uh, good job, Chief Jackson, I, I hope, I do hope that you realized that you would have been a mis, making a mistake following the worst city attorney in the history of city attorneys I have ever come across in my life. If that dumb bitch, and you are, Tamara, you are a dumb bitch- If that dumb bitch and you are Tamara, you are a dumb bitch. If you told Jackson to remove me from that meeting, we're gonna find out, you dumb bitch. And I can call you a dumb bitch, I could call you a stupid bitch. I could walk right up to you and say, Tamara, I think you are the dumbest fucking dumbest bitch on the planet. Yeah, Tamara, I, I can do that, I can do that. And I guess you could try to countersue me and claim that I'm calling you a female dog. And therefore, some reason you're putting out a call allegedly for other male dogs. Okay, nevermind, sorry, I'm getting carried away. That was all alleged, that was all alleged. Thank you, Arthur, I'm not going to stop talking. But I did have to take a break from talking over here in Inglewood for a little bit because I had to do some talking over at Denver. And then I had court this morning because Denver, now let's go back to talking about Second Amendment rights. So, um, as many of you know, it's alleged that I was an imminent threat. On Commander Joel Bell's life of the Denver Police Department, it's alleged. It's alleged with a lot of words strung together that, um. Didn't even pose a threat, but okay. So anyway, I'm an alleged threat on his life, so there's a protection order because if they say it, that's how it works. And I am guilty until proven innocent. And I will forfeit my Second Amendment rights because the courts have ordered. That I cannot be in possession of any firearm or ammunition. Well, my attorney filed a motion to modify that protection order and we had that hearing today. Here's how that went down. So I'm just going to put this out there. That this new district attorney over in Denver, John Walsh. He and his office are giant pieces of shit. I mean literal human shit. Um, the things they are prosecuting in Denver and the things they're not prosecuting, right? And the district attorney's office is determined to treat Commander Bell as a VRA compliant. That Joel Bell qualifies for the Victim Rights Act of Colorado. He doesn't at all. So therefore, I am absolutely not required to. Abide by a Second Amendment violation based on the law, okay? But we're not gonna follow the law because judges have discretion, right? Well, that judge today, uh, the verdict's still out on what I think about her motives. I'm gonna just reserve that, um, for a later discussion. Um, I will say that she had her mind made up before she ever read motions. Because it was very clear, she put it on the record that she did. My attorney filed that motion last Friday after she verbally tried to get the judge to modify the protection order at our last appearance. And the judge snidely let her know. See ya. That. Um, she doesn't take verbal motions and so my attorney said, okay, I'll file that motion. And of course, the DA immediately objected and the little girl who's prosecuting my case. Um, I'm not even sure she can read, I'm just gonna put that out there. She called her supervisor in at that hearing and her supervisor put on the record that he didn't care. That this wasn't a VRA crime, they were gonna treat it as a VRA crime. And they want the judge to treat it as a VRA crime, while the judge does have to follow the law. But the judge used discretion today to go ahead and uphold that protection order. Um, and continue to violate my Second Amendment rights until I prove my innocence. Guilty as charged, you will remain guilty until you prove your innocence. Now she put on the record, based on the allegations in the affidavit, which she allowed the prosecution to rehash. But she didn't allow my attorney to rehash the allegations. And that the facts just aren't there at all, yeah, I don't need to hear that. I already read what they were after we sat there and listened to this stupid girl read off a motion, word for word. That she had just filed this morning. And the judge admitted that she didn't have time to read it. Then she came back after she said, I'm gonna take a break. And said on the record that she had plenty of time to consider these motions and this is that. And then she turned around and scolded the prosecution for not filing the motion in a timely fashion. And sending it to the defense. My attorney put on the record, she said, uh, your honor, I don't have their response to this motion. And I just got a text from my paralegal who said that she happened to see that there was an entry in the system. Because she was looking for another court date. So I asked her to send it to me and I've had a brief moment to review it. Bottom line is, um, the judge didn't care and she didn't care what she put on the record. Um, it's my, it's, it's my opinion, she made a total ass of herself. In making it very clear that she was being exceptionally biased. And that she had made her mind up two weeks ago that she wasn't gonna modify that protection order and uphold the Constitution, right? So, my attorney was not very happy. Um, we're not gonna appeal that, we don't have time to appeal that. Um, they will just continue to violate my rights until I prove my innocence. So that's what happened this morning in court. And, yeah, that's pretty much that, any questions? And, uh. So who knows, last time they did this stuff in the meeting, they wrote a bogus warrant for me. So, um. They don't like to do this stuff on the spot, right? Because the cameras, so instead of telling me to leave or that I'm under arrest or whatever. They just do it behind the scenes and they go write a bullshit warrant with a bunch of lies. They get a judge to sign it and then they arrest me. Or I find out I have a warrant and I go turn myself in like, you know, we do warrant checks all the time.
See, I do a warrant check every week because I like to open carry a lot and I like to walk around like this and I know who I am in the city of New York. So if I ever get a random warrant and I don't know about it, I'm gonna get arrested, they're gonna take my stuff, I don't, I don't like to do that, so I just call ahead. I called like an hour before we got here to make sure and that's just like a normal, that's my normal life now is making sure I don't have warrants.
Yep.
Because I don't break the law and I didn't, but.
Cops lie. Cops are alleged liars, so we have to prove our innocence because we're guilty.
And then the thing is, it's not just the officers or the cops who protect us or any of these warrants. It's these judges or these magistrates signing probable cause for their affidavits.
Mm-hmm.
They will sign probable cause on a hamster sandwich if you let them.
I know, but you know, the thing is, when the cops are, are lying to the judges. I would like to know at what juncture these judges go, okay, we've seen this before. So could we get a little more concrete evidence for this arrest warrant affidavit? That's what I wanna know is, wh- when is that gonna happen?
And the, the thing is, they know, they know that they're, they're wrong and they know that they can't do these things, but.
They let them do it.
Like in one of my cases for obstruction, that got dismissed the day of trial. They made me wear my suit and tie, get a haircut, get all together, show up to court.
And why is that?
We moved to dismiss it.
Because the process.
Is the punishment.
Is the punishment.
Can't give me jail time, you can't give me a fine, you can't do anything because I'm gonna beat the case if the justice system is fair and the trial is fair. In my last case of harassment, that wasn't a fair trial and I got convicted, so.
The judge made sure that was not going to be a fair trial and he is appealing that.
Something that she said to me, step in the way, she said, uh. Can't remember it exactly, but something along the lines of, we don't want people repeating what you did. You need to be punished for your actions, we wanna make sure nobody records and documents the police like this ever, basically is what she said.
And if you're wondering what this is about, he followed an Inglewood cop and they charged him with harassment. Because he followed him in his car, mm-hmm, I follow them all the time. But apparently this time, because it was Louise Johnson and they don't like Louise and they haven't been able to hem him up on his open carry. Um, they went ahead, this same judge Christina Apostoli Platypus Face. Who's had way too much fucking botox and only became a judge for the PR stunt in becoming a judge. She didn't like him and she was tired of him winning. Bottom line, she was on all his cases and so she made sure that this trial was not gonna go his way.
I mean, you would think after showing up to that many court dates, I don't know, it's probably a couple of court dates each case, I've had five cases there. That there would be like just a little bit of a, a thought in her head that. Maybe this is retaliatory like his lawyer's saying, maybe, maybe the Inglewood Police Department is, is out to get him. Uh, you know, maybe some of these cases are vindictive prosecution or, you know.
You, do you think that woman is smart enough, first of all? To think at that level and second, who do you think her loyalty is to?
Oh, I think she's very smart, she's very intelligent, she knows exactly.
You think so? You think that woman is smart?
She's making conscious decisions.
I think she's a box, I, 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 I don't, I, she was not a good attorney, um. I'm sorry. Really, shi- shitty attorneys get these government positions and jobs because they can not make it in the private sector. I, sure, there's a few good judges out there. Uh, that civil protection order hearing judge, Marguerite Convoy, she ended up being good, I wasn't impressed to begin with. Of course she was good because she ruled in my favor. But what made her even better is that she took the time and figured out that the cop was lying. She didn't have to do that, okay? A lot of times, um, they're not gonna do that, they're gonna let them lie. And then they're gonna give juries certain instructions to disregard any testimony that they decide they didn't want them to hear. During the trial, I mean, these, we call this the best justice system in the world. So with me getting my Second Amendment rights violated continuously over here in Denver. In the most liberal progressive city in Colorado, I mean, what? I, I didn't really expect, I didn't really expect a judge in Denver to send a message to the police. That she was gonna uphold my constitutional rights, especially for guns. Uh-huh, you get, so what does that tell you about the rest? Of where I'm probably headed with this judge? It's not feeling good. So, um. I still have an incredibly fantastic attorney. She has not filed a motion to dismiss yet, so that will be next. Um, this is gonna drag out for a very long time. And we, I don't know, we had a win on the protection order to begin with when I got out of jail. You know, for my crime of being an imminent threat where the cops admit they were watching the imminent threat happen and they didn't arrest me. They let it go on as they admit that they watched it on a live stream involving chalk and conversation in chat. And then they called the fire department to, um, wash down all the chalk after I left. They went out and took pictures. This, okay, so there is that piece about getting that in front of a jury. I don't know what jury is gonna go, what, can you say that again? But if the judge wants to throw the trial, they're gonna throw it.
I mean, you'd be surprised, I don't, you know, I, I looked at all this court stuff and legal and the law and. Our rights is something that meant something, but when you go to court enough and you're in trials. Your whole entire perspective changes.
You have to, you have to live it.
The first thing is, is the crime that they're charging this person with just, that's like the very first thing that should come to mind.
We call that jury nullification.
And regardless of the evidence proof, whatever, they don't care, they're gonna, they're gonna pick whatever they feel like and, you know. Wha- whatever feels best, the best decision for them, but, I mean, to be honest, most people don't understand their rights.
No, you're, you're exactly right. Yeah, you're exactly right. And then to, and then to think that, you know, the justice system is gonna work. Hi, you have to go through it to understand. How corrupt it is, you just do. And when they, you know, when they wanna take you down, um, they do it, you know, um. Yeah, Gloria, it does, it changes you.
Like imagine exercising your rights to keep and bear arms, also out open carrying.
Yeah.
And they charge you with disorderly conduct for open carrying.
Yep, we talk about this uphill battle to defend the Second Amendment. Look, I don't care what your thing is with guns, if you don't like them, that's fine, I respect that. But you better respect my right to want to exercise my constitutional rights as for self-protection. Read it.
A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed.
Not be infringed.
You see, shall not be infringed here, you see, shall not be infringed here, let's see.
Are handy.
Shall not be infringed, no, shall not be infringed, not there, not there. Nowhere else in the Constitution does it say that except the Second Amendment, so that tells me that this has very. Uh, it has a lot of weight, it has a lot of importance to it and the fact that they can just violate your rights or simply exercising your rights. There's no lawsuit, there's no amount of money that can fix that, that's just crazy.
Agreed.
It's crazy, like stripping a man of the Second Amendment rights is like taking his life for him, it's so, basically.
And we go to these public meetings where the only people with the guns are the government, I mean, you know. Um, yeah. Yeah, thanks Gloria.
And, and the reason that I truly believe. That they charged me with disorderly conduct for open carrying was because I pleaded not guilty on three other, two other cases this time. Or was it three, I don't remember, it's too many cases.
They're retaliating. You have no rights, yeah, Arthur, we know.
No, we truly don't, you have to fight for them.
Yeah, and if you're not gonna fight for them, they are gonna disappear, so.
And also if you don't know them, you don't have them.
That's right. Uh, what did somebody say up here earlier to you? Uh, I wanted you to read this. Yeah, Fab Daddy, I fought the law and the law won. Except it's not the law that's winning. It's the corruption that's winning. Hmm.
You remember that, that guy on my disorderly conduct case, the caller? The ex-military helicopter pilot?
Was he on the jury?
He was the caller that called and said that he seen somebody walking around.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, and he testified and he got up there and fell apart.
So you have a, a man that swore an oath to the Constitution, he fought for our rights, so he thinks maybe. And then he calls the police and says, I see a guy with a gun. He's just walking down the street, not doing anything, he's not, he's not threatening nobody, not doing anything, but I don't wanna see that in my neighborhood. He wore the same patch right here, he wore the same flag.
And that's the guy they put up on the stand?
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and then he, uh, you know, take away all of his veteran day discounts, everything, he's not, no, I don't.
Exactly.
He doesn't even understand the, the oath that he swore, just like the rest of them, so.
Exactly. Yeah, his stuff has been really interesting over here in Inglewood, I totally foresee this, um, pansy-ass city council. Um, putting, uh, forth a motion to ban open carry for sure in Inglewood. It'll, it'll be coming and, uh, I think it'll be, uh, interesting. Uh, we'll see what that response is gonna be.
I don't, I mean, whatever they write on their little papers means nothing to me, the Constitution holds more weight than that.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna be in prison and neither do you. All right, we're gonna go because we have to go do some stuff, it's eight twenty. Um, if we come across some good cop-watching opportunity, uh, we'll go live again. So kinda watch for, you might wanna go unsubscribe to my channel, resubscribe and reset the bell setting. You guys, thank you for being in here tonight. Mods, thank you very much for putting my links in here for donating for warm gear. I, it was supposed, we were supposed to have, oh, look who's here. We were supposed to have uh, some cold weather tomorrow. But that forecast has changed. It's still gonna be warm. It's been in the high 50s, 60s. Heck, it was 75 the other, on Saturday, Friday and Saturday.
Just driving around the parking lot, huh?
Uh huh. Thanks DJ. Yeah Gloria, thank you very much for that Zeffy link. If you guys wanna use that link to uh, use a credit card to donate for warm gear. Otherwise uh, Venmo is at HHFDC, which is Helping Hands for Dignity Coalition. And uh, Cash App is Dignity Hands. I think you all put those links in there earlier. Maybe if we could just close out with those, that would be wonderful. But yeah, that Zeffy link is uh, is important, so thank you. We will stay safe Fab Daddy and uh, thank you all for being in here and uh, stay tuned. Who knows?
And remember, don't break the law unless it violates your rights to break the law.
Then you're obligated.